All right, how's everybody doing tonight? Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you so much for tuning in to the John Amancuqu Show. You are so kind to share your, what is this? Wednesday night, your Wednesday night time with me. But not only me, but with us. I have my wife joining me today on set. Let's give her a big hand. Clap your hands. Give her a big cyber hand clap. Honey, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing great. I'm excited to be here and share with you all on this stormy Wednesday night. But I'm excited about being here.
Listen, if we were in Georgia, we would say that it's a rainy night.
That's right.
In Georgia.
Yeah.
But close, it's a rainy night and day in North Carolina.
Yes.
But listen, it takes the rain, you know, to nurture the ground during this season. And our grass is thanking.
Oh, God.
God for sending the rain.
Yes, it is.
For those of you who are tuning in right now, hop on, introduce yourself. Let me know where you're coming on from. Give me your name. Tell me what city and state you're coming on from as well. I'm gonna log in here to my YouTube account and so I can interact with you.
Great to see so many people.
It's a joy to have y'all join us tonight.
All right, Timothy Covigliano is saying hello from Mobile, Mobile, Alabama.
Mobile and mobile.
Yes.
I love it.
Welcome, welcome.
Who else do we have?
We have the regenerative mind saying hello to Mr. and Mrs. Hello, regenerative mind, thank you for joining us tonight. Hello, Jerry Fennin. Hello, thank you so much. Hello, purple is royalty. Hello, thank you for watching again. I see that name a lot. I'm so glad to see a returning watcher. And Bonnie Rivera saying hello, brother John.
Hey, how you doing?
Yeah. And Lisa Snyder is saying blessings to you and your family. Lisa here from Redondo Beach, California.
Come on.
Hello, hello, hello. Welcome, thank you for watching.
Life is a lion's den. I like that name.
Mm-hmm.
North Metro, Atlanta, Georgia. What church do you attend? Life is a lion's den. I want to know, what church do you go to there in Georgia? Are you a member of Jamal Bryan's church? Because if so, if I say something negative about him tonight, I don't feel bad. I just don't agree with his stance on many things. I'm teasing you.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, I'm so glad that I pronounced your name right. People mispronounce my name all of the time and they always have. So thank you for letting me know that I got that right tonight. All right. Daughter of I am is tuning in from Washington DC. Life is a lion's den is a remote member of the Upper Room Church of God.
That's what I'm talking about. You go to a real church.
Woo, good to see you.
A real church, that's funny.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
I love it, I love it. And so we're gonna let some more people jump on. But we have a wonderful show planned for you all tonight. We're gonna talk briefly about our summer plans and what we've been doing thus far. We have a new crew helping us out this summer in the studio.
Yeah, yeah.
And John Patrick is the lead tech and Pam, her official title is my executive assistant. That's your title, Pam.
Yep.
And John Jr. is Superman. He's webbing the enemies. He's watching guard over the studio.
That's right.
Fighting crime and keeping the enemy away as daddy does his work. Everybody has a job.
That's right.
But listen, I want you to take a look at this wonderful set that we have. This is my new studio. And you all know that, I mean, I'm good at a lot of things, but design is not it. Take a look at this studio and what my wife did and her ideas and her concepts. I mean, if we can pan it a little bit possibly, that would be wonderful. Just show the sides if you can, as much as you can, John Patrick. It's gorgeous. I mean, she picked out everything for the shelving and the likes. I mean, it looks, it looks good. Look at all this stuff, man. We have space for a total of five people to join us on set. Yeah, look at all this. Look at this, look at this, look at this. It's excellent. She's done a phenomenal job, a phenomenal job. Thank you, baby.
Thank you so much. And your executive assistant helped me out quite a bit.
There we go.
It's Pamela and I'm a chuk, but we had fun working on this.
Did y'all?
Oh, yeah.
Pam, come in one second. Let the world see my executive assistant while my other executive assistant is in Paris.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was about to say.
She's in Paris right now.
Latonya.
Come on in, Pam.
Mean no harm.
Pam's like, oh, my goodness, now why are you doing this to me? How are you gonna call me on camera just out of the blue? Come on in, baby. You're always pretty. Come on, this is Pam.
Definitely.
There she is.
Always pretty.
She's, she's, say something in the microphone, Pam, talk to us.
Hi, how are y'all doing?
All right.
Now Pam, if I call you in here, you know, that's not the only thing I want you to do is talk. I want you to sing me a little bit of a song.
Oh.
Give me one verse, one stanza, one something. See, I'd have put you on the spot. I got you.
She's such a.
Come on, but she's a natural.
Worshipper.
She. Come on. I need a suggestion.
A suggestion? Sing, sing a Christian song.
Well, I need.
How about?
I know, please.
How about, what's one of your favorites? I trust in God.
Yeah, go there.
Or is that a good one? I'm trying to think, there's another one on the tip of my tongue. I think it's, oh, my gosh. It's one about the I am, oh, you are enough. Jira. That's, I love to hear you sing that. You don't like that one?
I do.
Okay, that's a good one.
Come on, let's do it. The world is waiting.
I think I'll sing Trust in God.
Okay.
I like that one a little better.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Oh, she was, she was. Well, come on, come on. You can get the mic, go ahead.
Thank you.
Take it, take the microphone.
Oh, my gosh, y'all.
This is, this is what you do when you do improv two stuff.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Come on.
Okay. Blessed assurance, Jesus is mine. He's been my fourth man in the fire time after time. I'm a little hoarse, y'all.
It's all right, Pam.
Born of His Spirit, washed in His blood.
All right.
And what He did for me on Calvary is more than enough. And I trust in God. Do y'all trust Him too? My Savior, the one.
Come on, Pam.
Who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail.
Woo, awesome.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Great song. Y'all give us some hearts, give us some hand claps. Let's encourage her.
Let me know what I owe you, Pam. I know you're gonna send me an invoice. You gonna send daddy an invoice?
Of course not.
Keep singing the praises of the Lord.
I will.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. We definitely have to keep our young people encouraged.
You have to.
We have to help them find their place in the world and in Christ early. Because the world has so much space for them to do so much wickedness. That was very nice, honey.
Hey, I'm glad to bring her in. That's my, that's my baby girl. She can sing too.
She can.
Yeah, she's anointed and appointed. Who else do we have on live tonight with us? Who else do we have?
Yeah, so many friends. Thank you all for encouraging her. Nice voice, love that song. That's what Susan Griffin said, thank you. Lisa Snyder said, beautiful voice, go girl, he will never fail. Oh, yes.
That's right.
That song is just such a testimony and such a blessing. We have a whole story that goes with that song. It's just, it's just beautiful. That took us through the first part of the year, you know. Two people close to us was in the hospital, her grandfather, my father. And then a good friend of ours, a lady that's like a grandmother to us. She was, and that was one of her favorite songs. She went on to be with the Lord, but that song and her life still lingers. And so that's a, it's a beautiful memory of the truth that God never fails.
Yes, it's so true. And you know, Pam has such a tender heart. You know, she's called to worship. And so she's always willing to help and support. Same with John Patrick.
Oh, yeah.
John Patrick, whether it's being the tech, whether it's playing the drum, the bass, the guitar, piano, organ, whatever it is, he's always in the mix. And then there's always John Jr.
That's right.
Who I affectionately call hubby. Let me tell you something about John Jr.
Oh, come on.
Man, I'll travel out of town and things of that nature, man. I may come back in the morning, this guy is laying in my spot on the bed. He used to do that. He used to, he used to do that when he was like five and four, at that age.
No, he.
I'll, listen, I'll come home and he in the, he in, he in the bed doing the Al Bundy. He do, he trying, he trying to do daddy. I mean, Hancock back, you know, the other hand, well, you know, you know how men relax and get comfortable. Amen, somebody, we got men on this, on this live feed today. But yeah, John Jr. is doing, I mean, he's doing the daddy, all right? And then one day I came in there and I saw some, some little underwear. Sitting, I'm like, who draws these? Who are these tiny heinies? You know, you know what I mean? Sitting in my hamper. And then got his little toothbrush, not on my side, but on mommy's side. He got his toothbrush, near mommy's toothbrush. I said, hold up there, I got, I got.
Oh, yeah.
I got to rearrange some stuff here.
That's my little man.
Yeah, but it's a joy, it's a joy.
Amen, amen. We would have fun whether you were here, here with us and then we'd make the most of it when you were gone.
That's right, that's right.
The Lord will bless us to always have a good time together.
Yes, yes, indeed. And so listen, it's the summertime and the kids are out of school and they've been working here with us in the studio. We have prioritized family this summer and working with them. We have other supporters who help us out as well. My friend Quentin, he comes over and helps us out and.
Yeah.
Tyra and Tanya comes over to get Tyra situated and everything like that. So we've been having a wonderful summer stocking the studio, getting everything prepared for this summer as well. And we just came off a vacation.
Yes.
Every, every summer we do a family vacation with Bishop Woodin and First Lady Woodin and all of the grandkids. And me and Crystal, and we had a wonderful time in Orlando, Florida. I mean, it was a blessed trip. And we, back in April, we went to Miami.
Right.
As a family, we had a ball there. We need to find a way to get back before the summer wraps up. You know, we're gonna find a way to get that done. But also this summer, I've been keeping things going with the content. We're working on a masterclass.
Yes.
That's going to hopefully release by the middle of August. So you all keep that in mind. We have a masterclass, it's 23 sessions.
Yes.
And I was able to do it alongside my wife. She's joined, she's joined me for that as well. And we're going to fight the enemy tooth and nail. The masterclass talks about reclaiming schools and communities. It addresses D E I, diversity, equity and inclusion. For those who don't know, it talks about critical race theory and gender theory and queer theory. How to flip school boards and own and own and own. It was just a wonderful experience. How did you enjoy filming for that?
I, it was an eye-opening experience. I'd never, I've done a lot of things, but recording and being a part of developing a masterclass was just a top-tier experience. And I'm really excited because I can imagine all the people who are going to participate in it and the work that they're going to do. Because this is the masterclass, you know, can I say for?
Sure, of course you can.
For Cyclone 400. And this is something that, you know, we've gotten the emails and the mail that comes in and people have been waiting for it, it's highly anticipated. And you will not be disappointed. I was sharing with John, you know, I have between my career in human resources, certainly in technology and media, marketing, media and even real estate. I've taken a lot of masterclasses, but I'll be honest and say this is one of the best, actually the best masterclass, most well-produced masterclass that I've ever seen. And so I think that it's gonna charge people up to go out into the community, to go out to your school boards and make a difference. It's gonna be applicable to any person, whether you are a grandparent, whether you are a student, a principal, a teacher, a concerned citizen, a mom, a dad, a church member, whomever you are, this class will prepare you to get on the front lines and address the material that is in our schools. And not just that, but all kinds of things. There's information there to prepare you if you want to run for the school board. And when I say information, I mean, we are getting into the details of what it takes to, to form and formulate your campaign, your message, your team, all of that. And just what it takes to go to meetings and to speak to the school boards, to create a base of support behind you. I mean, there's just everything that's there from, you know, from nuts to soup, soup to nuts, as people say. So I think that when it comes out, I encourage you to just jump on it. We're gonna have some samples out there that you'll be able to, you know, take a part in, that'll wet your whistle. And I think you'll be able to see that there's a lot that you're gonna want to do in participating in this. So I'm excited about it and I really appreciated the opportunity to be able to do it with John. I was really excited, you know, to be able to shoot it with you and to, you know, be able to participate. So it's gonna be an awesome experience for everybody. So I'm looking forward to it. And our release date that we are planning on is going to be about August. So in time for schools to open, in time for the school year to start again. So be praying, prepare your hearts and minds now to take charge and to go forth. That's been a saying that I've been saying all year for various things that I've been working in. And I believe that this is just our time to go forth and work on some really awesome things.
Yes, so see, listen, we are armed and ready. As you know, I've had the opportunity to travel to 20 states, speaking up for children and fighting for common sense in education. And listen, Crystal, it hasn't been easy.
Mm-hmm.
All right, it's been a lot of early mornings and late nights and flights here and there and everywhere. We have been fighting the devil, right? And principalities and it's really spiritual warfare. And I don't think that many people understand that aspect of it. You know, sometimes people sees, can see a person who is traveling regularly and they see the headlines and they watch the videos, but they don't know the burden and the mental anguish that even goes into that kind of work and how the enemy will really attack you. You know what I mean? In every place, he will, he will attempt to do so. That's why it's important to be clothed in prayer, to walk in righteousness, to walk in the fruit of the spirit. Because the enemy will try to get you wherever he can and he will try to discourage you in the work. You know, I am, I am fighting against principalities that have, that have a grip on education and the pedagogy in America. Many of these individuals are Luciferians.
Oh, yeah.
And they're Marxist atheists. They hate the God of the Bible. These people are demonic. And I'll be honest tonight, there are many times where I'm traveling and I'm going to the school board meeting and I feel sick, my stomach doesn't feel right. Or the night before I wake up and it's like I can't breathe or something of that nature. There's some type of just demonic attack. You're fighting Satan. And the thing that encourages me the most is that the Bible says, greater is he that's in you than he that's in the world. And you know, we, we, we are conquerors. We're more than conquerors. We are victorious through Christ Jesus. And so for those of you who think it's just all glitz and glam, I'm giving you the behind the scenes challenges of this kind of work. Because we are fighting for kingdom principles and for kingdom truth. And hear me when I say this, because this might encourage somebody else that's out there. The kingdom costs.
Yeah, yeah.
But it pays well.
Amen.
It's gonna cost you something. You know, you, listen, I've had to deal with being handcuffed, the many articles, the hate mail, the messages to the inbox, even people are now sending hateful letters. I was at church on Sunday and went by my mailbox and opened the letter and just listened to a person from California who was just giving me the what for because of my biblical stand. But guess what? Especially if that person is watching right now, I ain't budging off of anything.
That's right.
God got me in this and God is gonna keep me out. I'm, I'm, I'm sticking with the Lord. But speaking of school board meetings and that topic, I recently went to Illinois to speak at a school board meeting there, which was, which was a new state, which made the 20th state.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, which is, which is a big deal that I've traveled to. And I want to tell everybody that's watching right now that there is no rhythm like the algo rhythm. So do me a big favor and like, share and subscribe to the channel. Post your hearts, post your likes, all of that good stuff. But share this feed right now. That's the only way for us to work the algorithm. The algorithm is tricky. I'm suppressed on every platform.
Yeah.
Instagram suppressed, X suppressed, Facebook suppressed. And on YouTube, I am suppressed, but I am not depressed. And we are not going to take down, we're gonna keep fighting. But do me a big favor while you're on right now, share this feed so that it can get out. But yes, I went, I went to the school board meeting in Deerfield. It's called Deerfield 109. And they have some issues going on there, some terrible problems that's taking place in that school district right now. I have a video that's queued up. I want to play that for you so you can see it. You're gonna listen to this message right now and you're gonna hear me give a passionate plea and message to a predominantly woke and diabolical school board. And make sure you look to the right and see the feminist, the feminists who are just ticked off and mad at me because this man has the audacity to speak up and use his voice. You know, because feminists love it when men are neutered and quiet. They love, they love to silence the male voice. You know, the male voice is important and the female voice is important. But the feminists, see, because feminism is a gateway towards lesbianism. That's what it is. Just like being beta is a gateway to being a homosexual. Feminism seeks to rob a person of their voice. And the man that's neutered and the man that becomes beta and he shuts up and he's quiet because he's afraid and he's frantic because what someone might say, man, I'm not called to that. God didn't call me to that. He called me to use my voice, to be tender-hearted, to be kind, but also to speak and to walk like a man. So take a look at these feminists as they are on this board and they get angry with what I have to say. All right, so your district is infamous because you all are finding creative ways to push perversion upon children. You have several issues going on at Shepherd Middle School. Number one, you have a book entitled Queer, The LGBTQ Guide for Teens in that school district. The book reads genital stimulation can come from any body part. You can use your hands or your hips or your feet, or you can rub your private parts on someone's thighs, arm, butt, genitals, ankles, wherever. You may stroke his penis, insert fingers into his anus or insert fingers into her vagina. If you're inserting fingers into somewhere, you may want to consider using a rubber glove to help prevent the spread of disease like syphilis, which is on the rise amongst gay men. So here's some advice for Pride Month. Don't put your fingers in someone's butt, all right? You also have a book entitled What Girls Are Made of at Shepherd Middle School. It reads, eat him and drink him and do with him what I will. She was talking about worshiping Jesus, but come on, she was talking about sex, right? Sex with Jesus, that was what she wanted, to give Jesus head. And I totally understand it. So this book endorses giving oral sex and sucking the penis of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. You should be ashamed of yourselves for allowing this kind of smut and filth to be in the school district. And we will make sure that this nation sees you willful cowards who support this kind of mess. And number three, the issue of the bathrooms, look at the men who are on this board and the superintendent. How can you all claim to be men, providers and protectors and priests of your homes? And you allow a boy with a penis?
That's right.
Not with a vagina. Men don't have vaginas. Let me get that clear. Men don't have vaginas, nor do they have breasts. Then they could have man boobs, but they don't have breasts and men don't lactate. And men should not have the right to go into the women's restroom and defraud women of their privacy. I know we have some feminists on this board, ones that don't even want to look at me. What about the feminists in here? Don't you want to protect women? A woman's right to choose? A woman's right to do this and do that? A woman's right to have her voice? What about protecting the little girls who now have to go to school and contend with someone pushing? and contend with someone pushing sexual harassment upon them? That's what you're doing. But when men become neutered in our culture, they lose their voice. And this issue should not persist with the number of men who are on this board. I said, every man that's on this board, if you're not speaking up loudly about this, you are complicit, you are a punk, you are a coward, and you are the reason why this is taking place. And God forbid, because the DOJ and the DOE is coming and you better be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
You see that? Ladies and gentlemen, that is what happens when the truth shows up. And did you hear the ladies to the right, to, 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 to the right? Sit down, sit down, sit down. Just, they want to use what authority they have. At the end of the day, they can't make me sit down. I chose to sit down. Why? Because I'm a law abiding citizen. But the best that they could do in that moment at the end is say, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. After all that truth, after calling them out.
Sit down. That's all.
The best they have is to use their little authority, their pee authority, and say, sit down. And you know what? If I wanted to keep standing in that moment, I could have.
I'm glad you sat down.
But I sat down because it's right to sit down.
That's right. You were.
But they think, they, they go, I mean, that, that rails me the wrong way. Let me go, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. I, I've called them out for having a book in their library that celebrates and talks about giving fellatio to Jesus Christ.
Yeah, that's bad.
God forbid.
That's totally disrespectful. And I, that's, that's where you struggle. It's like, how are we supposed to maintain a decent society? I mean, I'm a, I'm a born again Christian. I'm a believer in Jesus Christ, 100%. I believe in the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost, and I believe that it's the only way to God.
That's right.
I would not read or endorse a book of someone giving fellatio to Muhammad. I mean, I just, I just think that that's just unconscionable.
That's right.
What is, what is the point? That doesn't even enter my mind.
Right.
So for us to, to present material like that to young people and to call it right or to give it the dignity of even being present in a school library, it shouldn't even be in a school trash can. I mean, it's like, why are, you know, why are we doing this? There's just such, such a strong movement afoot to create an indecent state of America.
That's right.
And then, you know, kudos, kudos to you, hats off to you for going up there and giving them three minutes of what for.
That's right.
And they never get that again. They got it that day.
They, they, they got it that day. And you know, what I'm noticing is that the more that I travel, more law enforcement is showing up. They find ways to try to, try to intimidate you and to threaten you and things of that nature. But man, listen, I, I, I recall the Apostle Paul saying that those at Philippi were encouraged because of his bonds, right? Because of him being restrained and handcuffed. And so if it, it's already come to that at one point, but if it comes to that again, then it's necessary, you know? And, and, and this is why Christians must speak up, right? We witnessed the victory that took place just last week with the Supreme Court ruling. And, and how the, the Mahmoud versus Taylor case was triumphant.
Right.
And now parents can choose to opt out of LGBTQ plus curriculum. I mean.
Thank you, God.
Who would have ever thought that that would be a battle? Do you not, do you not recall that when Madeline Murray O'Hare used her son William as a pawn to remove school sponsored prayer in 1962 and 1963 as well? At that timeframe, they offered her the opportunity to opt out. But for her, that wasn't enough.
Right.
Opting out wasn't enough. She, she didn't want William to go to a separate classroom or not being there when they do the short school sponsored prayer that only had 22 words in it.
Yep.
That wasn't enough.
22word.com.
Removed altogether.
She sure did.
And for, for, for them to be in a situation in Maryland where, you know, parents just want to opt out. We just, we just want a choice.
Yep.
And they're being told, no, you can't have a choice. You have to read this smut. I mean, what does that tell you? What, what comes to mind when you think about that?
It just comes to mind that we are truly in a battle. We're in a war. These are principalities. People are not fighting as if we are trying to be neighbors and be shared, but it's, 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 everything is happening as if you are in a war. We are.
Sure.
You know, in a war, there's a ceasefire and there's a peace treaty possibly, like what we hope we have going on in Israel. But in battle, you know, they want their, what they want, they want what they want, and that's it. There's no, there are no demilitarized zones, there's no peace, there's nothing in between. And I just hope that the church, that the saints, that those of us who name the name of Jesus, that we will finally come to the understand that we are in a war.
That's right.
You know, the quote unquote, as they call it, Jesus just loves you gospel is not for today. Does Jesus love us? Yes.
Yes.
But you, I'm not talking about that statement in and of itself, but that statement that wants to tell the world that and nothing else, that kind of gospel. Listen, you're gonna lose.
Yes.
They're gonna, they're gonna walk right over you. They're gonna, they're, I mean, and we're seeing it. We're seeing people put on the rainbow color. You can go to some of these LGBTQ parades and they're saying that.
Yes.
They will say it for you, you know? But it's time for the church to really stand up, go into the battlefield and do exactly what you're doing in whatever sphere, in education, in whatever sphere. But we have got to understand we are in a fight. We, you know, and it's not pretty. This is a fight.
Oh, it is. And the casualties are real. And the, and the main casualty is our posterity.
Yes.
Our children.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it's, it's the future.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's who they.
That's what we're fighting for.
That's who they want the most. And keep in mind, in that district, Deerfield 109, the DOE is investigating Deerfield District 109 over a Title IX complaint about a trans girl using girls' facilities.
Yeah.
Let me read this. It says, a parent complained her daughter was uncomfortable sharing a locker room. Students were allegedly questioned after refusing to change. So the girl said, no, we're not changing. And so they get interrogated by the principal and by teachers. The district says it followed Illinois law and offers private changing stalls. Trans advocates say the student was offered privacy and was not disruptive. What do you, so a dude.
What do you mean not disruptive?
Yeah, a dude with the plumbing of a dude is not disruptive going into a locker room at a middle school with girls?
See?
How is that not disruptive?
That is gaslighting at, at the.
It is, it is.
I'm just here.
Yes.
Minding my business.
Yeah, but we're, we're just hanging out and the, the average, the average dude going through puberty in a locker room changing with girls.
No, come on.
There's no way he's not gonna become disruptive.
There's no, he, his presence is disruptive.
It is.
He should not, that's what I'm saying. You should not be here.
Right.
You do not belong in this locker room.
Yep, yep. And so now tensions exist between Illinois state protections and federal executive orders. Local politicians and media are involved with both backlash and support. The district says it followed Illinois law and offers private stalls, blah, blah, blah. Federal versus state clash. Trump's executive order restricts access by biological sex, while Illinois law allows students to, um, to use whatever bathroom they want to. So hey, for those of you who are living in Illinois, you have, you, you have an option. You can keep JB Pritzker, your governor, or you can vote him out. Vote, vote.
That's what you need to do.
Vote him out. He has, he has deep pockets. He's a multi-millionaire, you know? He's a trust fund baby, a wealthy family, all that good stuff. But listen, man, y'all should not allow that pizza eating donut, eating JB sloppy Pritzker, uh, uh, baboons. I don't know what to call them, to, to, to pervert your children like that. There are so many people who are just allowing this guy to be elected and reelected. Y'all need to vote him out. He needs to go. He's got to go.
He's got to go.
Because the policy is simple. If you have the plumbing of a man, be in the locker room with men.
Period.
If you have the makeup of a woman, be in the locker room with women. And that's, that's simple.
It's simple.
It, it's as simple as it gets. But Crystal, something amazing took place yesterday.
Yes.
What happened?
Well, the University of Pennsylvania has vowed to ban trans athletes.
Come on.
And they are ending the civil rights case that focused on swimmer, swimmer Leah Thomas. And so they're gonna be taking back some of the awards that he got and righting some wrongs that have happened, that have been happening in this country. And I am so excited and I can't help but acknowledge and thank the President of the United States and the administration. Because if this, if the last seven months have not taught me anything else, they have taught me that elections matter and that everything comes down to who. Things don't just happen. Who the president is, who the president appoints, who the governor is, who the mayor is. They are the ones that these policies come from. And when you move one person out and put another person in, change can happen almost immediately. And here's some of the information that is about what's taking place.
Yes, walk us through it.
Number one, records will be stripped. Some of the early reports use records, uh, language like stripped of awards or erased records. And some people are saying that that's not what's happening, but it is what's happening. The agreement is that, uh, the agreement states that UPenn will update its swimming records. This means that the school's website now reflects other female athletes as holding the top time in events where Thomas previously set program records. An annotation has been added to the site noting that Thomas's records were set competing under eligibility rules in effect at that time. Praise God for that. And also, uh, the University of Penn will be sending personalized letters of apology to female athletes who were disadvantaged by Thomas's participation. See, that's what I'm saying, just an acknowledgement. We couldn't get that. All of these people who love women and are pro this and pro that, we never could even get an acknowledgement that there was a problem. And for you know, the University of Pennsylvania to send these letters, bravo, good job. Thank God for you. And then the, the Title IX violation, the U.S. Department of Education's Civil Rights Office concluded that the University of Penn had violated Title IX by allowing a male to compete in female athletic programs and occupy female only intimate facilities. Thank you. And so future policy, as part of the settlement, the University of Penn also agreed to announce that it will not allow males to compete in female athletic programs and will adopt biology based definitions of male and female for athletic participation. You talking about going back to square one, but, but we'll take it. Thank you so much.
Biology based definitions?
Biology based definitions.
I.e., I.e., Genesis 127.
That's right.
Definitions, male and female. See, God, God got this thing right.
He absolutely did.
He needs no help. He needs no support. He needs no assistance. The Creator does not need the support of the William Thomases, not the Leah Thomases in this world, but of the William Thomases. He was born William, all right? God doesn't need your help. God doesn't need your support. He made you. We live in a day where the created is striving against the creator. The Bible says, woe to those who strive with your creator. These individuals who push this, according to Romans chapter one, they are haters of God.
That's right.
And inventors of evil things. It's an evil invention. I mean, the most evil invention that we've seen in this past era. I mean, along with the, you know, the abortion industry and, and, and what they've done, which is diabolical, is this invention that you are not who and what God deemed you to be. That is a very, that is a clear attack on the Amago Day because we are made in the image of God.
Amen.
And every life, every life, before it's a construct in the uterus of its mother, it's a concept in the mind of God. We are conceptualized by Almighty God, regardless of how you got here, whether your parents were married, whether they were single, whether it was a one night stand. It could have happened in the back of a, of a, a bathroom at a bar, in the backseat of a car, wherever it was.
That's right.
You were still conceptualized by Almighty God. He has a purpose, he has a plan, he has significance for your life, and he loves you in the manner that he made you. But no, 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 we have haters of God today. We have people who want to reconfigure what God has stamped and programmed us to be. And so I, I think that now more than ever, and I have to keep going to this to interject, because we need the church to stand boldly with this current administration. All right, President Trump has done his part. You know, the guy who said to Corinthians, the guy who doesn't really know much Bible, the guy that's not really a Christian, the guy who's, you know, 45 and 47, he's the orange man, blah, 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 blah. President Trump's policies are more biblically aligned than the average evangelical Baptist, non-denominational and sermon or Pentecostal sermon that you might hear on a Sunday morning.
Absolutely.
There are preachers who will not stand with his policies, the simple ones. The simple ones, like Genesis 127. Well, I don't know, Rev, we can't, we can't say that, we can't support that now. That's going too far. You need to be more loving, you need to be more kind. No, Donald J. Trump.
He's doing it.
He is more of a man of cloth. That's saying something than many of our preachers who've been to their cemeteries. Seminaries, all right?
Apparently, that's what they are.
And the preachers who wear the turnback collars and they have all of the lingual. Oh, they can quote the whole Bible now. They can give you the Hebrew, they can give you the Greek, they can give you all of the biblical hermeneutics and translations, they can exegete every passage of scripture. But at the end of the day, how does that apply with cultural issues? President Trump is knocking the ball out of the park. And that must be mentioned.
Amen.
Right on, King Jesus, and right on, President Trump.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and just to give some context to what's happening with UPenn, this resolution comes as part of the Trump administration's broader efforts to restrict transgender athletes in women's sports. So Leah Thomas became the first openly transgender athlete to win an NCAA Division One title in 2022 while competing for UPenn. And so it's wonderful to see that this is happening, that it's taking place. And I was reading through the resolution and the letter and just to see this coming from the University of Penn State. And I believe that they will be one of the first. I believe that other schools are going to follow suit. We know that this is not right. I mean, just the, the fact that they're saying that we're going back to biology base. That means that, I mean, we're following, we're following the science. We're, we're doing what we know we should have always been doing.
Following the yellow brick road, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and to see that they're doing it. So I agree with you. All we need to do is celebrate. Don't be shy about this. You know, let's put hand claps and hearts in our comments. Share this on your timelines. Let people know, let there be a voice of celebration. People celebrated in 2022 when this guy got this award. And I mean, people were upset too, don't get me wrong. But you know, we gotta, we have to make noise and let it be known that this is the direction that the country should be going and we are for it. And I don't care if you are, whatever religion you are, if you have a daughter in athletics. you should be happy. If you have a daughter who is in high school and you see her practicing, she could be eating pizza and cheeseburgers and everything else, and she's disciplining herself so that she can compete and get a scholarship. You don't want her to go through all of that and just to be blown out of the water, literally or figuratively, in whatever sport she plays, because there are unfair rules and unfair administrations and things taking place. Let's support this. Let's push it because we are finally headed back in the right direction.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. And so this is a major victory. The church must stand up. We must celebrate this. Post this everywhere. Talk about it. Matter of fact, when you get to church on Sunday, see if old Rev, if your preacher talks about it. If your preacher has nothing to say about that, you should talk to him later and say, Pastor, you know, this is a major victory to protect women. You know, because all the guys like to do the whole, yeah, we're for women, we're for women stuff, until it's time to really be for women.
That's right.
You know, you know, and so.
They're missing on you.
Show me if you're really for women. Rev, preach a sermon about what happened included. Give us five seconds at least and just talk about the success of what happened.
And this is also good. I like seeing civil rights used in this context. Because sometimes, for us, even as conservatives, that word civil rights looks like a bad word.
Right.
Uh, but this is good. This is a wonderful use of the Office of Civil Rights in the, in the federal government and at UPenn. I think that this is wonderful, that we are making sure that we are protecting basic rights. Because this was a violation of, of women.
That's right.
I mean, point blank period. There's, there's no fluff. This is not propaganda. This is not twisting. This is not any, any twist of marketing sleight of hand. This was an attack on women. And to see that the, that we are coming together and righting the wrongs. Hey, I'm all for it. This is wonderful.
You know, Crystal, you, you just hit the nail on, on the head. It's an attack, it's, it's an attack on women. You know, and if there's anyone that should be speaking up, you know, it should be the providers, the protectors, and the priests of the home. It should be men. Men should be running to the battle. You shouldn't be like those punk and cowardice dads who sat in the bleachers, ate their Twizzlers, their M&amp;M's, plain or peanut. Their Raisinettes, their Mike and Ike's. They ate their popcorn and drunk their Diet Coke because it all tastes better with a Diet Coke. And they watched their baby girl be defrauded. Now, there's a running joke that black people don't swim that well. All right? Matter of fact, John, John Junior is really learning how to swim this summer. He's doing a better job.
Oh, yeah.
He's got the biggest, uh, uh, what is it? What do they call those things? Goggles? He's got, he's got the biggest goggles. That, that money can buy, but he, he's figuring it out.
My baby is out there swimming.
You know, uh, it's a, it's a running joke that black people don't swim that well. But listen, man, if I go to a swim meet and Pam is out there swimming, the young lady that came to hear a song earlier. Man, I may not be able to swim in twenty feet of water, but listen, you, 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 I'm gonna do the backstroke, front stroke, the doggy pedal. Daddy, I'm jumping in. You hear me? And they're gonna know that there's, if there's one man in that swimming pool with all them girls, they, they, they're gonna see it's two.
That's right.
On two, it's gonna be almost like, um, the Hebrew boys in the fire.
There was a fourth man.
There was a fourth, he is a fourth man in the fire.
It looked like, son of God.
Son of God. They're, they're gonna say, there's a, there. They're gonna be like, who's that?
Looking in the, in the pool.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It's a, it's another contestant.
They, they, they go, John, there's a, there's a fourth man in the pool. There's a, there's another dude in the pool. And, and it looks like the likeness of the book Banning Pastor.
That's him.
You know, oh, I'm, I'm jumping in from the top rope. Now y'all gonna have to help me out.
Oh, I can swim. So, so.
Right.
I, I, I can swim.
Well, no, Crystal.
Go right on in there.
You, you can swim, but see, it would be criminal, let's get this right, for you to jump in there.
Okay.
And there's a man in there.
That's right.
Now, I know you wanna go. That's your temperament.
Oh, yeah, I would.
But you would make me look bad.
Okay.
If you went. That's almost like someone breaking in the back door of your house. And you know, the, the husband hears it and he taps his wife, hey, honey.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do that. I was talking about swimming.
Could you, could you, could you, could you, did you hear something downstairs?
You, you, you got it.
And, and he says, honey, can you go down there and check? Man, no. Listen, if, if a dude is jumping in the swimming pool against my baby girl, have a seat. I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you like the feminists told me. Sit down. Sit down. And I'm going into that swimming pool and you just have my bail money because it might get ugly, all right? That's how we're gonna do that.
But I like Sonya said, that my friend has a daughter out of Massachusetts on Carolina swim team. She's black and she's fired. That's good. Congratulations. I'm glad that she's, she's swimming and doing her thing. And hopefully, she can give some love to President Trump and his administration for making sure that things are gonna be equal.
That's what.
In that sport.
That's what it's about, my friends.
My fellow, my fellow UNC.
Crystal, let's talk about that big, beautiful bill.
All right.
Everybody's upset about that. We're gonna go to this, but I wanna show you a video that was on Roland Martin's channel. And this gentleman, um, that's gonna first come up talking is Reverend William Barber. Let me give you some context. This man, this man. This man went to a movie theater in eastern North Carolina.
He did.
And when you go to the movie theater, they already have chairs there for you to sit in. All you gotta do is sit your behind down in the chairs that they provide. But oh, when you give a Negro too much space.
Come on now.
This guy went to the movie theater, pulled up in his SUV, grabbed a chair from his SUV that came from his house. From his house, Crystal?
From his house.
Had, had an assistant take the chair into the movie theater and sat down and was upset because they told him he couldn't do that. So I want y'all to know, just to give you some context of the level of foolery that you're getting ready to listen to. This clown did that. Now, I, I, listen, man, I don't know where that works in any culture.
No.
Where you could just take your, you, that's almost like bringing your own popcorn maker to the movie theater.
And people bring their own food and it stinks.
And they do. It's illegal. You're not supposed to do it. It's sneaky.
Uh huh.
And not supposed to do that. But we don't do that.
Oh, no, 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 no.
We wholly.
Uh uh.
I've never seen you bring any candy in a purse.
No, sir.
To the movie theaters.
Uh uh, no, no, no.
While we were dating, married and the likes. Ain't that right?
Yeah, that's cheap. We ain't gonna do nothing like that.
No.
Low class.
It's low class.
And if you not supposed to sneak a Snickers into the movie theater, you certainly are not supposed to bring your own chair.
You can't bring your, that's right. You got the, ma- matter of fact, one of y'all, John Junior, Pam, somebody, bring, bring, bring me our candy jar. This, I mean, because everybody likes candy at the movie theaters. And, um, listen, listen, we have the best candy jar here at IKG Studios or Candy Jars. I mean, my daughter Pam is on the snack committee.
Oh, yeah.
Here, and she's, she's the hostess with the mostest. If you want some snacks, if you wanna drive your A1C all the way through the roof, if you, if you're saying, forget, uh, Make America Healthy Again, and you just, you just here, you just here for the snacks, listen, listen, I mean, look at this right here. I mean, come on. See, wait, oh, my goodness.
And we have a good snack.
This is just one. Bring, bring the rest of them. Don't, don't, don't hide it now. You know, you know, you went and, and purchased all this stuff, got daddy eating this stuff. I had three today.
Oh, Lord.
But that's not common, though. I just did it. You know what I mean?
You're getting your energy up.
I, I, I was getting my energy up. You know what I mean? I, I, I was just doing it. Here, here's John Junior. He's, he's bringing it. He's bringing his, put, put it on the table right there, John Junior. The candy jar. Oh, oh, she, she. Bring it in, bring it in, Pam. Sit it, sit it, sit it, sit it down on the table. Uh huh, right, right there. They even got the overflow bags. That's the overflow. See, in the kingdom, there's candy and there's, there's overflow. Now, if you, listen, I'm gonna invite you to my studio at some point and come help us eat up all of these snacks, okay? But, um, you shouldn't even bring this into the movie theater. Because you're not supposed to. They, they tell you, all right, that's, that's enough. We, we don't want to show, we don't want to show the world that y'all, that y'all getting ready to have a cavity, all right? But, um, you're not even supposed to bring this into the, the, the movie theater. God forbid, it's not supposed to happen. I almost wanna chew it, but.
Just did it right there.
It's, it's gonna be hard to, to, to do that. But, I mean, y'all, 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 y'all get the point. This man brought a stool. Let me get back on subject, but I, I'm not lost. The man brought a stool to the movie theater, okay? This is the same guy who's been arrested probably ten plus times, um, at, you know, the Capitol in, in North Carolina, um, at the House and the Senate, the General Assembly. And, um, in, in Washington as well, you know? He, he, he's a professional, um, victim pusher.
Yeah.
You know, he, that's what, that's, that's what he does. And he's dealing with some major issues right now with one of his businesses. And so, um, this guy, I just wanted to give you that context before you listen to this mess. It's going to sound good. It's going to sound biblical, but hear me. Rat poison is ninety-nine percent good ingredients, but it's the one percent that'll kill you dead every time. Take a look at this.
So John from IPS, come on and tell us some truth. And you know, at our rallies, we have the politicians to come to listen so that when they go back to the floor, they carry the people with them. And so, James, we thank you and others who've come to listen today. But here we go. John, tell us, first of all, the top ten things that are bad about this bill, because it's more than just the Medicaid. And then talk to us about the deadliest part of what's going on. And then we're gonna put a face on these numbers.
Thank you, Bishop Barber. Thank you, Congressman Raskin and others who are here, who will bring this message back to the Capitol. I'm John Cavanna from the Institute for Policy Studies, and it's been an honor for us to work with Bishop Barber and Repairs of the Breach and the powerful moral groups assembled here this morning to expose to the American people the immoral budget moving through the U.S. Senate right now. This morning, we release a crucial update on our joint report, The High Moral Stakes of Budget Reconciliation. And we're also releasing new state-by-state data on how many people are projected to lose their Medicaid and SNAP through this budget. And our analysis concludes that Senator Bernie Sanders was correct last night on the Senate floor when he called the proposed budget the most dangerous piece of legislation in the modern.
Bernie Sanders. Who would listen?
Oh, yeah, Bernie.
Bernie Sanders.
Mr. Weekend at Bernie's.
I mean, come on now.
I mean, who, who's gonna listen to him? You saw the sign that said, Feed Kids.
Feed Kids.
But this is from the same political party that wants to unalive a baby all the way up to birth. And they also push infanticide.
That's right.
But you wanna feed kids.
Feed them, though.
You wanna feed them.
That's right.
I mean, this, this man, they, the Democrats are not concerned about feeding kids. They are concerned about feeding, clothing, housing, and giving fake Social Security numbers to criminal illegal aliens.
True.
That's who they support the most. Fifteen million have come into our country under the Obama-Biden, and I said it the right way, under the Obama-Biden regime. And we all know by now that President Biden was not running our country. He was not running the country. Um, he was, what do they call it? Auto stamp? I think it, I think it is. The rubber stamp, auto stamp. I think that's, that's the saying that they're giving, giving to him. Auto pin, auto pin, auto pin. Because his signature was on a lot of documents, but he's not even capable to even sign this, to sign documents. And it was just, he was missing. And so we don't know who was running the country, you know? Uh, and so, but these, these guys are talking about feeding children. They can care less about children. I just had to put that in there. But also, but also, I'm upset because this guy's named John. And, and, and John look a little, he, he looks sweeter than the Twizzler to me, Crystal.
Uh oh.
John, John seems a little bit sweeter than the Snickers that I'm holding up right here. John, John's a little bit sweet, y'all. I'm, I'm not trying to be fun and not trying to be cruel, and he needs some more time in the sun. Uh, John, 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 John is, is a little weirdo. But you know, John is commandeering and using the, uh, the window dressing of a obese black bishop by the name of William Barber to push his agenda. And so John gets the moment to talk and to give his points. Watch it. Watch it. They, they, they love to dangle the carrot in front of Negroes. They love to do it. Take a look at this.
...in history of this country. Our IPS and Repairs research concludes that no single act of Congress has ever added more to the U.S. deficit and to the violent income and wealth inequality that threatens our democracy.
That's right.
So I'm gonna say just a few cruel facts that the research shows. One, a health and hospital apocalypse. At least sixteen million Americans would lose health insurance. That amounts to fourteen poor and low wealth people for every millionaire household that would receive a tax cut. Shame. Take the state of New Mexico, where over a third of the inhabitants, a total of seven hundred and fourteen thousand people are on Medicaid. And over one hundred and seventeen thousand people are projected to lose it. Shame. In New York State, over a million people are projected to lose Medicaid. And I ask you all to look at these documents. The figures are on the coffins, north, south, east, west. Over sixteen million people affected by this. Tell your congresspeople, tell your senators. Then, research, and Bishop Barber just referred to this from Yale and UPenn, have estimated that these cuts would result in more than fifty-one thousand preventable deaths per year. That is one thousand deaths for each of the coffins that are here today. And this is not just policy violence, it is policy murder.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, hold it there. They wanna talk about policy unaliving. I can't, I don't wanna say that M-word because we're on YouTube and YouTube loves to suppress you. But he's talking about unaliving. Um, they brought one thousand coffins. Um, since the inception of Roe v. Wade, which was struck down two summers ago, and, and God allowed the church to topple Pride Month and make it Life Month. But since the inception of Roe v. Wade, over seventy million babies have been unalived with the support of this same political party. But y'all wanna talk about one thousand coffins? More than one thousand black babies are aborted every day in this country.
That's right.
But y'all wanna talk to me about one thousand coffins?
Did they really bring a thousand coffins?
Crystal.
I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking, if I, if I made a donation to this organ, I would be so up. You couldn't just, I mean, you actually brought, I mean, come on.
Come on now.
This, this, that's awful. That's awful.
It's, it's, it's bad. It's bad. They, they, I mean, it's, it's, it's all a circus.
It's a cir-, that's what I'm saying. It's a show. It's a circus.
It's a circus.
And, and quoting all this information about what could happen and might happen and would happen from people. Yeah, from people who are clearly running a circus.
That's right.
Who clearly don't make good financial decisions.
No, it's, it's true. It's evident. Watch.
What is it? Policy murder. Two, on climate, as you know, storms, heat, and diseases related to climate change are killing tens of thousands and creating millions of climate refugees. Well, the Senate bill now includes more than one billion in new tax breaks and subsidies for the fossil fuel industry. Shame, on top of existing subsidies that will accelerate climate change while costing taxpayers an estimated seventeen billion per year. This is policy murder. What is it? Policy murder. Three, hundreds of billions of dollars more for the war budget and the deportation budgets. This bill will add roughly. This bill will add roughly $120 billion to the war budget, which eats up more than half of the total discretionary budget of this nation. And it adds roughly $150 billion to cruelly arrest, detain, and deport immigrants. Shame. These expenditures will enrich the CEOs of the military contractors and private prisons while killing thousands more in US wars and inhumane detention facilities. This is policy murder. So I bring you to these documents, use them. There's two of them up on the repair-
Someone says, this is, it's policy- Unaliving, I can't say the M word. But then someone says, shame. I mean, the rhythm is just all messed up. I mean, they could have, listen, man. They could have worked on their recitals and say, hey, it's gonna be on the count of two or three. I mean, they just can't even, they just can't even get right. I mean, what are they doing? What, I mean, this is so corny and cheesy.
Yeah, somebody said, "It's corny and creepy." Bless one for three, you are right, it is. And then somebody else said, "A lot of yo gabba gabba."
Oh, no, it does. That's exactly what it is.
Especially the caller response. This is yo gabba cabba, oh my-
This is policy unaliving. This is-
Shame.
Shame. Someone else said, "This looks like a skit on Living Color." Oh my goodness. And he does look like Fire Marshall Bill just a little bit.
He does, he does.
Someone said that this is the something Elton John, what did they say?
Low budget.
The bootleg, the bootleg Elton John. That's exactly what he looks like, man.
We have a very funny audience.
We do. Thank y'all for allowing us to be who we are and not holding me to unnecessary restrictions. The same that pastors shouldn't speak like that. Listen, man, I can use my humor. Jesus uses humor. I'm gonna use my humor. Peter, he cussed. I ain't cussing, y'all. I ain't cussing. But I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use my humor.
Yeah.
Watch this.
The ones up on the Repairers website, the IPS website, the state by state breakdown, going through each of the different areas in the budget. And, but we wanna end, Repairers IPS, the rest of us, by saying that it is within our power as a nation to end this policy murder on the most vulnerable. By fairly taxing the wealthy and giant military and fossil fuel corporations, reducing our bloated military budget, and demilitarizing immigration policy, we could free up more than enough public funds to ensure that we can all survive and thrive. So today, we urge you all, as you call your congresspeople, to join this moral fusion movement to force our elected officials to end this budget and to pass a moral budget.
Moral.
Thank you, John. And John, I want you to read at least five of the southern states. Because down south, where one-third of all poor people live, these senators come up here and say that they're doing what's right by their people. And they phrase this stuff in coded race language. But the people that's gonna be killed, they won't be killed by race. They'll be killed by death and policy murder.
Uh, yeah.
But just share with us, like Texas and Georgia and North Carolina. I want y'all to hear these numbers. And South Carolina, Lindsey Graham is leading this. But what is Lindsey doing? What does he, talk about the number of people.
Okay, Georgia, 84,000 people expected to lose Medicaid. 440,000 expected to lose SNAP benefits. Moving down to South Carolina. Well, let's start first with, I told you, New Mexico. New Mexico has the highest percentage of people on Medicaid, on SNAP. South Carolina, 48,000 expected to lose Medicaid. 143,000 expected to lose SNAP benefits. Texas, 303,000 expected to lose Medicaid. 806,000 expected to lose SNAP benefits. And in the great state of West Virginia, it's not in the south, but it's represented here by Pam Garrison and others, 75,000 expected to lose Medicaid. 84,000 expected to lose SNAP benefits. This is policy murder.
Policy murder.
Alright, hold it right there, hold it right there. Alright, Renee Richardson, you are right. Immigrants are the ones who have been taking the benefits that Americans should have. I love the big beautiful bill. You are so right, you hit the nail on the head.
Amen.
Tracy says, "SNAP just provides unhealthy food." And you know, it's true. I think there should be some requirements and some guidelines and some criteria for what you should be able to purchase.
Right.
We shouldn't go to your house and you got a pantry full of Butterfingers and Honey Buns and Moon Pies and Dunkin' Donut, coffee cake, cookies and all this stuff, and ice cream. I mean, you shouldn't have that.
That's right.
Right?
Especially if you have children, you know? And we know that a lot of the areas, the stores aren't even selling-
Yes.
-healthy foods. They're in food, we're in food deserts.
Food deserts.
Yeah.
And the food deserts come from people going to the stores in the economically disadvantaged communities. As we saw Kroger in the southeast Raleigh area, where we're not too far from where we do ministry. We, it closed. Why? Because they were going there and they were getting a five finger discount. They were stealing the stuff.
Well, they were stealing in some cases. But what they said was, people were just shopping, you know, in the grocery store.
The outer ring.
Yeah, they were just shopping at the aisles at the front. And so, they had a store full of food.
Produce and-
And meats and everything like that. And everybody's shopping up there with a bubble gum and the stuff you think about at the last minute while you're checking out.
The frosted flakes.
That's what people, yeah. And it's, and so, they got out of there. So there's roses there now. That's from what I know, doing quite well.
It is, it is. The truth said they are using EBT at Starbucks.
Wow.
The devil.
Wow.
And that's why I'm almost envious. You know what I mean? Cause we got a nice Starbucks budget over here. But yeah, you shouldn't be able to do that, man. I'm against that. Watch this, keep, let it roll.
You'll never hear us at a moral Monday criticize people on their personal failures, personal failures, cause everybody has those. But what we are here in the public square is to criticize those who are using their public office to destroy people's lives. We're here for life.
He said that.
Healthcare is life. Standing against war and violence is life. Fully funding public education is life. Living wages is life. We are not here as a coalition of death.
Really?
That's what we see going on with this murder and killing. And we're sending, and not only, every time they say we don't have the money, it's not a lie, it's a damn lie. That's what it really is. It's a damnable lie. And we have to call it out for what it is now that you've heard the numbers. We gonna put a face on these numbers. And every congressperson is getting this data. They will not be able to say that they didn't know. We are making sure that every one of them gets all of this data and testimonies of real people.
Alright, so there you have it, my friend.
Congresswoman Jasmine Crockett is in the house, glad to-
That's what they had to say about the big, beautiful bill. But Crystal, can you give us some of the real details that's happening with this big, beautiful bill? Can we put that on the screen as well?
Oh, yeah.
We wanna show you the real deal, holy field.
Oh, yeah. We're making some strides in the right direction. So, and this is coming from the White House. And it's talking about the one big, beautiful bill. Number one, puts America first. It delivers the largest tax cut in history for middle and working, middle and working class Americans. The ones who need it. They are the ones who need the break. They are the ones who don't qualify for enough support. So they are not, they're not getting the break that they need. A lot of the programs that we just read information about, these middle and working class families can't get any of that help. And they desperately need it.
That's right.
And you can talk to a lot of people in the middle and working class families. They almost feel penalized for working. Because they know that if they were single and not married, they could get a lot of help and support. But because they're trying to work and put their money together to feed their family and be under one roof, they can't get the support that they need. So thank God, this is going to give a tax cut to give support to middle and working class Americans. Bigger paychecks of $10,000 more in annual take home pay for families.
Woo-hoo.
I mean, come on now. For who? For families.
Families, money, money, my money.
No tax on tips, no tax on overtime.
Yes.
No tax on social security. No tax on made in America auto loans. It protects 2 million family farms from punitive double taxation. Permanent increases to the child tax credit supporting over 40 million families. A vote against this bill is a vote for the largest tax increase in history. It rescinds billions in green new scam funding. It restores fiscal sanity, slashing deficits by roughly $2 trillion. It eliminates waste, fraud, and abuse from bloated federal programs.
And many of these programs were pushing diversity, equity, and inclusion. And Biden had funding directly connected to that in the federal government
Right.
through 24 agencies and departments totaling over a trillion dollars.
That's right.
Right, DEI is where all of our money was going. Y'all remember all of this Doge stuff?
That's right.
I know that Elon Musk and President Trump are riffing right now. But I kinda think it's a movie.
Yeah.
I think it's a drama playing out. I don't know, man. Sometimes it looks real, sometimes it looks fake, I don't know. But at the end of the day, something is going on behind the scenes. And that's all I'll say about that.
Yeah, yeah, well, he done his part and he's gone.
Yeah, but with the Doge stuff, though.
Yeah, yeah, but Doge is good. That's done, and I thank God for it.
He pointed out a lot of the waste. All of the people who were on Medicaid.
Right.
Who were 300, 300.
All those numbers.
250 years of age, older than Methuselah. You know what I mean? It made no sense, alright.
Some of the numbers that we quoted, they quoted in the video we just watched. I mean, we saw through Doge that some of those people don't exist.
No, they don't.
These are just, some of these people are dead already.
That's right.
Some of those people are illegal. So let's just give it a shot, let's go for it. It's going to deport at least 1 million illegal aliens per year.
And so, what is that gonna do, Crystal? To the benefits that they are eating up and taking away from American citizens?
It's gonna do exactly what Renee Richardson said. It's gonna give it to the Americans who need it.
That's right, we wanted to go to Americans.
Right.
Not just, not just the black people.
Right.
Not just the white people, Asians, Pacific Islanders, Indians, you name it, Hispanics. No, we wanted to go to American citizens. And if you are a legal immigrant that's come to our country, we're including you.
That's right.
If you've come here the right way, yes, we want you to receive those benefits as well.
That's right. This is what should be happening. And that's why I'm so glad that for the most part, African Americans are not jumping in to the fight, to be mad about what's happening with deportation and illegal immigration. I'm glad that we are sitting this one out and understanding that the bloat that has been, and the funds that has been going to illegal immigrants, that's not our battle.
That's right.
There's more for Americans. It makes the largest investment in border security in a generation, providing nearly $150 billion to secure our border and deport illegal aliens. Thank you, Lord. Finishes Phase 2 of the border wall. Shifts the cost of adjudication in the immigration system from the American taxpayer to aliens. We didn't even know we were paying for that. Look at that. Hires 10,000 new ICE agents, 5,000 customs officers, and 3,000 Border Patrol agents. See, that's good. President Biden was hiring thousands of-
IRS agents with guns. 85,000 to be exact. But Trump came along and said, man, we gonna fire those IRS agents. We're gonna go get some ICE, ICE agents. Too cold, too cold. ICE, ICE agents.
He needed, that song might be getting ready to come back.
It needs to come back. Just like the YMCA. That's vanilla.
They need to go, they need to go for it now. Don't miss your moment.
Too cold, too cold, come on here.
Alright. So it funds the Golden Dome missile defense system to confront 21st century threats. That's great. Delivers the largest Coast Guard upgrade since World War II, stopping fentanyl and criminal cartels by sea. Modernizes our military to ensure it has the resources to be ready lethal fighting, to be a ready lethal fighting force.
Yes.
After four years of weakness by the Biden administration, it ends Biden's war on American energy and drives down energy costs. And it unleashes domestic oil, gas, and nuclear power, restoring energy independence.
Wow.
Let's do it.
So much winning.
Yep.
All we do is win, 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 win.
That's right.
No matter what. I mean, God is good, God is faithful now. Regardless of how you feel about this current administration, you can't look at these things and say, oh, yeah, but I'm gonna dismiss it. And I'm just gonna be a staunch Democrat and not celebrate. No, something in you ought to say, okay, man, this makes sense. And we're moving in the right direction. Now, we have one more thing that we're gonna talk about, which is the P Diddy trial. But I'm looking at the time. Do you think we'll be able to come on tomorrow at some point and go live?
Probably in the afternoon sometime.
In the afternoon sometime? What do you think, possibly around 3:00 PM, 4:00 PM?
Yeah, probably around 4:00.
Around 4:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
That would be good.
Hey, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna table, we're gonna table the, what's that? Look at all the candy.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my goodness. The kids left the candy. Oh, my goodness. But I tell you what, we're gonna have a good time once the camera turns off. Because my mind is on the Snickers. But listen, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna talk about the P Diddy, the P Diddy trial tomorrow. We'll give an update on that and some other pressing topics. We'll come back tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, set your notifications, set your reminders. Tell your mama, tell your daddy, tell your granny, tell everybody that John Almanchuk and Krista Almanchuk are coming back on tomorrow at 4:00 PM. We'll talk about the Diddy trial and other things that are going on in our country.
Amen, alright.
Listen, thank you so much tonight for tuning in. We appreciate your support. I pray that the favor of God be upon you wherever you are. And may the grace of God stay with you, may he keep you. May you sleep well tonight. There's somebody that's watching that's been wrestling at night, tossing and turning. And the melatonin won't get it. You can't rest. Listen, listen, the Bible says that God neither slumbers nor sleeps. So that means he's up, he's up, he's awake, he's on post, he's on watch. My friend, may you take sweet rest tonight, knowing that the things that are giving you anxiety and worry and the things that you're fretting over, that you're concerned about, God has those things under control. And you are in the palm of his hands. God bless you and God bless America.